I'm going to call the special meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order on Tuesday, May 10th, at 2022, at 7:00 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber and via Zoom teleconference. Which meeting link can be found on the agenda and on the city's website calendar. The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Susan Lovering, and Alderman Clea will lead us in the Pledge to the Flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with the Spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the benefit and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. If you're participating via Zoom, please state your presence, reason for not attending the meeting in person, and whether there is anyone in the room with you, which is required under the right to know law. Would you please call the rolls?
Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderman Sullivan.
Here.
Alderman Clea.
Here.
Alderman Moran.
Present.
Alderman Locas.
Here.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderman Clemmons.
I am participating via Zoom out of an abundance of caution due to COVID-19. I am currently at home in the room by myself, and I can hear everybody.
Alderwoman Kelly.
I am here. I'm alone in this room, and I am participating via Zoom because I am COVID-positive.
Alderman Kamau. Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderman Goveya.
Here.
Alderman Kathy. Alderman Tebow.
Here.
Alderwoman Timmons. Alderman Mulcher.
Here.
You have ten physically in attendance and two participating via Zoom.
Thank you. Tonight is our presentation on 14 Court Street. I'm going to turn it over to Mayor Donches.
Well, thank you very much, Madam President. We may, it may take more time than we have tonight to fully discuss the Court Street Building, but it is an important building for the city, both in terms of its historical context, the old Central Street Fire Station with some additions, as well as because of the role it's played in the last several decades, the home for a number of our arts organizations, particularly in the performing arts. And we have a group of people from some of those organizations here who would like to talk about the importance of the building to them. So I won't go on too long, other than to say that the building has definitely been improved over the last few years. Three or four years ago, the, for example, the main fire bays were simply musty dead storage, no, not being used at all. With your cooperation, we put out an RFP and a couple of the different RFPs, and finally found Liquid Therapy, a local brewery, to occupy and improve that space, and I think you can see a dramatic improvement there. Also, the fire suppression has been added to the portion of the building that did not have it before, including the Streeter Theater and the Lower Theater, which has not been in use for at least a couple of decades. So that improved safety and enhanced the environment there. And finally, the roof was replaced, and there are no more leaking. So that's a big improvement. Certainly, there are additional changes that can be made, and those, the costs and how we should, whether we should embark on those, or how and how much that would cost, is certainly a discussion we can have. But I think the first order of business tonight is to alert you, or educate you, or remind you, the community and the Board of Aldermen regarding the use that has been made of the building, particularly by arts organizations. So I know they are here, Peacock Players, the Theater Guild, and others. So I would invite you to approach the podium and speak of your experience.
I'm not sure if anyone did sign up, but...
No, I signed up.
Okay.
My name is Chuck Evans. I'm currently Vice President of Actor Singers. Our clubhouse is on 219 Lake Street, next to the Lake Street Fire Station. Actor Singers has been in existence, for those of you who aren't familiar, with about 65 years. We started off in the Church of the Good Shepherd on Main Street. We do about five productions a year, two main stage adult shows, which perform in Keefe Auditorium, and the three other productions down in Court Street. Court Street is very meaningful to the organization because we have access to a space that's centrally located to the downtown Nashua area. It's got substantial amounts of parking, and it's at a very reasonable cost. Theater is a very high-expense occupation, and it's very difficult to get any, what you might say, profit out of the theater to keep, to cover our overhead for our clubhouse down on Lake Street. But we have, probably our biggest moneymaker of the year is our junior or children's show, which we perform down in Court Street. And we have 35 to 50 kids involved, and each kid brings along their parents. And in addition to the performance weekend, the kids also perform for their peers, their contemporaries, because we're able to bring in the local schools, Mount Pleasant most noticeably, and also the Birch Hill School out in Hollis. And so we're able to, Mount Pleasant especially, they walk them down, they charge them a couple of bucks to see the show, and then they walk them back for their lunch, and they get an opportunity to see their peers actually out on stage performing, and they also get to see a relatively good production. So for those of you who haven't seen the sign over Main Street, Actor Singers' next show is just the amazing Technicolor Dreamcoat. I have a few advertising cards here and some commemorative pens. I can stick them out for you if you'd like to take one. The pens actually work, they're pretty darn good. So anyway, anybody have any questions, feel free to reach me. I think, Derek, you have my email address, and look forward to hearing from you. Thanks. Appreciate your time.
We have a little visual display for you.
My name is Fred Daniels. I'm at 46 Chester Street here in Nashua. I'm also the Treasurer of the Peacock Players Board of Directors. I'm also an alum parent of a Peacock performer who wishes to be here today, but he is, he is at work down in New York City. But what I want to do is just give you some context of what Peacock has been to Court Street and what Court Street has been to Peacock Players. We are entering our 47th year at Court Street, and during that time, just to give you some general statistics, we've had over 250 main stage productions of plays and musicals and other theatrical performances. We also have an improv group. We also have a specialized musical singing group called Spotlight, and they have performed over 60 times over the last 10 to 12 years. We have also had a number of special performances, especially with New Hampshire Symphony, where we've combined the singing talents of our wonderful youth with the wonderful orchestral talents of Symphony New Hampshire. The other thing that we do with most of our plays, the ones that are appropriate, is that we offer the plays to the local schools in the Nashua area, where they can come in on a special morning performance, and we will provide that performance for them. We've had over 15,000 students in the Nashua schools, mostly in the elementary, but also some of the middle schools, come to see our plays during their performance runs. In addition, we have had over 60, we believe somewhere near 60,000 to 65,000 people come through Court Street Theater to see all these various performances from all over the region. So let's just give you some context. The other thing that we're very proud of is we offer a summer theater camp. Many of the years, we've offered it at Court Street Theater during the summer, and we've have had over 6,300 children come through that theater camp in the last 15 years. We've also been able to, through grants and through wonderful donations from the residents of this community, have raised over $100,000, which we have used for scholarships. Our goal is that any child who wants to perform, any child that wants to go to our summer theater camp, can go regardless of their financial situation. So we've been very proud to allow many, many children to come through our programs that may not have had the opportunity to see and to hear and to experience what we feel is just a wonderful situation related to education and enrichment. And so this gives you some idea of all the things that we've been able to do at Court Street. Court Street's a unique setting for us because of the theater size, which is about 260 seats when it's fully open, and that is just the perfect size for these types of performances, allowing these young people, such as Grace and Molly, to be able to perform and to have wonderful, enriching experiences. And so there really is no other place like this in the region that allows us to have not only the theater, but also rehearsal rooms, classrooms, offices, a decent lobby, it could use a little rehab, bathrooms that work, public bathrooms that work. So it's just a really, really unique setting in a wonderful location. And so we really think that this is someplace that we would love to see continue. We feel that the partnership that you, the city, would have with Peacock Players, Actor Singers, New Hampshire Theater Guild, Symphony New Hampshire, would allow us to be able to help contribute to not only the maintaining, maintaining the building, but also to upcoming renovations through fundraising, through donations, through grants, and things of that nature. So it's been a wonderful experience for these children, and we want to see it continue. Thank you.
Who's next? Anyone else going to speak?
Actually, I'm on Zoom. If there's, I can be next.
Okay. All right. Very good. You're next. Go ahead.
Hi, everyone. I'm Deanna Hoying. I'm the Executive Director of Symphony New Hampshire. We are New Hampshire's oldest professional orchestra, and we will be celebrating our 100th anniversary in April of 2023. While our main performance space is Keefe, our offices are located at the Court Street address, and it has been so impactful for us to be close to our friends with, with Peacock Players. As I mentioned before, we have had a lot of great collaborations with them in the past. Having this kind of artistic cell there at Court Street is, is really conducive to partnerships that benefit an awful lot of people. And for us, of course, it's also affordability. For us to be able to have our offices there at a very affordable rate with other arts groups and partners is, is just a boon to our, our bottom line. And so we're, we're so appreciative of the opportunity to be there with friends and to have our offices there, and so easily accessible to, to our patrons who want to come in and purchase tickets and talk with us about all things Symphony New Hampshire. So we very much appreciate being in this space and appreciate all of the efforts being made on behalf of the Court Street. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is El Malar, and as was announced today, I will be the new Executive Director for Peacock Players. I am very happy to introduce myself to you. Currently, I am an eighth grade teacher at Penachuk Middle School, where I have taught for, this is my seventh year there. I did my student teaching at Penachuk. I did a long-term sub at Penachuk. I am a Nashua teacher. So even as I move into a different role, I will still be a Nashua teacher. I will just have a very different classroom. What I, a lot of people today are talking about the history of Court Street Theater, and I would love to just clue you into something that I am very passionate about and bringing to Peacock Players and to Court Street Theater as I take on this position, and that is to leverage its central location, which, as a middle school educator, I have to notice, is within walking distance of two of our middle schools, and within bus stop walking distance of all three of our middle schools. I have plans to leverage this fabulous location to bring in more students who would not necessarily have the funds, the means, the opportunity to pursue an arts education experience because of lack of transportation access, funding, whatever the situation. We are in talks, as the Board and myself have sort of talked about the future of Peacock, we want to push into the middle schools. We want to bring more opportunities to our kids. We want to push into the elementary schools as well. Court Street is a key factor in our ability to be able to do those things. The fact that we are so local to some of our poorest children is something that I am delighted that we have this central location, that we can be an accessible space for them. So while the past of Court Street Theater is fantastic and amazing, I am very interested in the future of Court Street and how that space can be used to bring more theater, more education, more arts to our kids. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wants to speak about the Court Street? Come right up.
How's it going, everybody? For those of you who don't know me, I'm Stan Tremblay. My partner is Jason Palmer. He is currently on the Zoom call with us. We are co-owners of Liquid Therapy at 14B Court Street. A little bit about us, we're a beer manufacturer. We have 15 taps right now, 13 of which are my recipe made right in-house. We also serve food there, which we're actually looking to expand, and part of the reason why this client came forward to help us move into that next section, to move towards expansion and being this turnkey location that we're looking to, to build here in town. People have come from all over New England to get our nachos. If you haven't had our nachos, shame on you. It is regularly voted some of the best food around, and it has made its way onto Facebook pages in Maine and Connecticut, and during the pandemic, people came from those locations because their government shut them down, but we here in New Hampshire were allowed to have outdoor seating. Gave us quite the option. We were just voted one of the top 16 breweries in New Hampshire on a Facebook page called Southern New Hampshire Beer. They have a user-run voting collective that all the breweries in our small state go up against each other in a bracket similar to like that of NCAA, and we happen to beat out Schilling. That's something to be said. If you've had Schilling beer, you know it's good, you know it's some of the best in Northeast, potentially some of the best in America. We are also voted the 2020 Great American Beer Bar from craftbeer.com. There are lots of beer bars in New Hampshire. We were voted the only one from craftbeer.com. Little town Nashua. We have a large following, and honestly, Court Street is a pretty ideal location for us. It gives us the opportunity to expand, looking into that adjacent piece of the building, the old call center, which we now have all of our grain and other dry storage at. We're looking to expand our brewery and have more beer production, which means taking over more of the New Hampshire stores and restaurants. And ultimately, if it's all kept in that one location, because our name and our address is on the can, it's going to push people here to Nashua. It's going to push business to the rest of our businesses here in downtown and the rest of the surrounding area. We do local collaborations on a regular basis with our friends at Martha's and Oddfellows, the brand-new-one Tail Spinner. They just opened up, and we all worked together for New Hampshire Craft Beer Week, where we all created a beer with one another and, and released it all during that time. You know, we collaborate with a lot of other local businesses, too, like Free Wheel Cycle, which is right across the street from us out the back door, and Go Cycle, who builds those electric bikes. Blue Wave, Blue Wave Brazilian, whoa, that is a tough word, Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu Studio, was actually started by Officer Jimmy Quinlan here of Nashua. He and I collaborated together to make a beer, and we put it out, labeled Blue Wave, to promote him and his business. He's been there for us on more than one occasion when we've had things going on, and it's the least we could do for all that he does for us and our city. And also gin spirits. We've purchased barrels from them on a few occasions, create barrel-aged beer, and sell that off. We have a really devoted following, and honestly, people regularly, whose grandparents, or whose parents, or who they themselves retired out of that building, came inside, sat at my bar, and my partner's bar, looked at a picture from somewhere around 1910, and said, "Hey, you see that window right there, the top-left window, where their office is? That's where I slept. That's my bunk." What kind of values that, right? The people who put themselves on the line on a regular basis get to come in, and the gentleman there at the end on the left should know that as well as anybody being one of our former firefighters. Last of all, this is my town. I was born here in Nashua. Before it was Southern New Hampshire Medical Center, it was Memorial, and that's where I was born. I was raised for the first five years of my life on King Street. I then moved away to Peterborough from five to 20, but my best friend grew up on Monroe Street. I was here every spring, summer, winter, fall vacation. I even celebrated Christmas with them. I've seen this town go through a lot of changes. Seminole Plaza with Sharkeys, and the Brant Theater, and IGA, and all this other stuff, which now you'd never realize that those were even a glimpse of the past, but they're all still there, and so is this building. This building is still here, and it will be here, and we want to be a part of it. Beyond that, we, I think you've seen, we bring a lot of value to this city, and, and having us here, having us in that building, keeping that building running and going, I think brings its own level of awesomeness. 1870. It's going to keep going, it's going to keep ticking. We pay taxes on that building. We took out from the revolving loan fund, so that way we could rebuild that entire bay that horses were drawn out of, and then turned into fire trucks, and then unfortunately turned into a junk depot because it was left to rot for a long period of time. And as you all know, some of the people here had to deal with that for a long period of time, as well as I did, because I was told I was able to keep the doors open when we first moved in this location that connected the front bay with the Peacock Players. And then one of the biggest things after we signed on the line was, oh, they've got no, what's it, life, life policy, because they don't have any sprinklers. So one of the biggest pieces of the puzzle for us to come here, to have that gateway between the front and the back, snipped in the blink of an eye. Oh, what's the big deal? People can go around. Sure, they can go around, and they do, but how much easier would it be if we worked with our friends up in Concord to make sure that there was regulation between the front and the back for New Hampshire Liquor Commission, and make sure that this works out? So that way, when she does bring all of these students and their parents forward, that they have someplace to eat in between shows, they have someplace to get a beverage in between shows, and we are family-friendly, we do have games, it's always open. I have, when I started this place, a 10-year-old child that I did not want to see put aside, and he was always a part of it. He comes in and helps out now. He's 13 years old. He looks me in the eye. I have to look him in the eye and make sure that I'm doing the right thing for this city, and I'm doing the right thing for that building and the memory that goes on, as well as my partners who trusted me to do the right thing. We have done a lot for our local nonprofits. Coming up in a few weeks, Battle of the Batches 2. We pulled in people from the fire department. We pulled in people from the police department. They each made beer in my, in my location. They're going head-to-head to raise money for Operation Warm and Nashville Path. This is round two. Oh, Mr. Boxer, how's it going, bud? We were just talking about Operation Warm and our, our little fun get-together that we'll be having in a few weeks. One of my good friends is Christopher DiTulio, Sergeant. Well, now he's Sergeant Detective of National Police Department. He told us that the VFW went through a lot of trouble through COVID. They didn't get the funding that they needed to help out the veterans. So we made a beer together, and proceeds went back to the VFW. We've done things with Veterans Count, an offshoot of Easter Seal, again, another veterans organization. My dad's a vet, many of my uncles are vets, many of my friends are vets. It's the least we can do, because they're the ones that were willing to take bullets for us when no one else could. We also worked with Tom with the Chili Cook-Off. What was this, two years ago at this point, I believe it was? You had asked us to make chili for your Chili Cook-Off on the tree streets, and I helped you out, and we made some chili for it. And lastly, we cleaned up this neighborhood. When I first walked up there with the former Assistant James Veo, there were three needles on the ground in that location. There is zero there today. I have a great relationship with the police department. They come there on their time off, they have parties there on their time off, because how many changes we've made. They don't feel like it's across the street from what it's across the street from at 23 Temple Street. We've done what we have, and we're just going to keep doing more. And I hope you guys really think hard and do the right thing, and make this building something that people come to for another 200 years. Thanks.
Thank you. I noticed we had new people join us. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Come right up to the podium.
Good evening. My name is Amy McKay. I'm here to represent the Nashua Theater Guild this evening. Just five seconds of my background, I come from tourism from St. Augustine, Florida. So I've seen a thriving arts community before. Reminds me very much of Portsmouth and that kind of an area, and I've heard that idea spoken of many times since I've been in Nashua, about this, you know, very thriving arts community, a place that people come to downtown in the evening. And as soon as I saw, five years ago, the Court Street Theater for the first time, I saw this really nice area, where a potential for a very nice area, little overgrown at the time, but, you know, we got all that unweeded, and as, you know, mentioned previously, very nicely cleaned up, and so much potential. And that's what I've seen in the last five years working for Nashua Theater Guild, is the building continuing to grow, and the building getting a lot of attention, and getting just better in general, moving towards your ideals, and all of that beauty and all of that wonder, all of these wonderful creative people that we have at Nashua Theater Guild. So all of our people are volunteers. We don't have people who are paid, so they come on their time off after work, and they work in all of the different areas that you need for theater, and for the non- And for the non-theatrical people who like to work behind the scenes, they work in marketing, they work with all of the people who we have, who can make contacts for local businesses and make deals for dinner and a show and all those fun things that we do. Our organization has been here since the 1960s, so we are 62 years old this year. And this is our home, and it's very important to us. It's very different than Elm Street, because we would be lost in that space. It's very different than many other spaces, because it's very intimate. You get to walk right up, just like you and I are right here, and you get to look people in the eye and have this connection and that intimacy and those moments that are beautiful in a thrust stage. So it's very important to us to have something like that. And we continue to talk about the beautification of the building and move forward and figure out fundraising and anything else we need to do to continue to build our home, you know, to better it. So I think that's all I have for you, but I think it's the right thing to do. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wants to speak about 14 Court Street? Well, thank you all for being here tonight. We appreciate your input. And Alderman O'Brien, you have a motion.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make the motion that the May 10, 2022 special meeting of the Board of Aldermen be adjourned by roll call.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yay.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yay.
Alderman Klee.
Yay.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yay.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemens.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Camo.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Goveya.
Yes.
Alderman Kathy.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Muschel.
Yes.
You have 14 yays and zero nays.
We are adjourned at 7:32 PM. In two minutes, we'll go into our regular meeting. Thank you, everyone.